We will continue with our next public hearing. Guards at Rhinebeck LLC Phase Two, Garden Way between New York State Roots 308 and Astor Drive Site Plan Approval. Public hearing on application under Town Code Chapter 125 zoning for amendment of approved Phase Two site plan December 20th, 2010 to authorize modifications in grading including incorporation of a pond and associated landscaping, elimination of common refuse areas, and addition of certain second story decks to the elements of action under secret. David.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. May I approach the board to give you the public notices and...
Absolutely. May I approach? Cool. See, I gotta gavel. Now people do that. This is great.
Um, Michael?
Yes, sir.
Would you like us to go over the plan again?
I just, just the, just the...
The changes?
Just the changes, yeah. Just the changes.
So, we have, um, the pond, which is one change. That pond is located right here in the center. Um, we have not gotten rid of any trees or plantings. We just moved them back, you know, to all here. I think the count is...
Yeah, we're, we're... We, uh, just to go over this pond centrally located here within the, uh, kind of a horseshoe landscaped area. Uh, we did remove up to four trees to accommodate the pond. The pond's roughly thirty-five hundred square feet in the area. Uh, some of the other modifications that we've also made on this site plan that were here before you this evening is we'd like to eliminate all the common refuse areas. Uh, we'd like to have individual pickup of the refuses at each dwelling. Uh, the refuse containers would be located within the garages of each unit. They wouldn't be out in the public eye. Uh, in addition to that, we are seeking approval, uh, for the placement of second story decks as an option on the units on the western side of the site for the B-type units. I've highlighted those in yellow, uh, same as last month, to go over those with you. That would impact, uh, Building Forty, Thirty-nine, Thirty-eight, Thirty-seven, Thirty-five, Thirty-four, and Thirty-three. Lastly, uh, we talked about lowering of the existing berm to the south of Buildings Thirty through Thirty-two. Uh, originally it was proposed, uh, that the, uh, grade there be elevated to three thirty-nine. It's three feet higher than what it currently is. There is no landscaping proposed on top of it. It was just mainly a berm with grass to be planted. As you're all aware right now, uh, David's group has installed all the landscaping for the entire landscape buffer here. We currently have a fifteen, uh, trees here, a mixture of white pine, cedars, and, uh, I believe, uh, maybe a fir there as well. Uh, so we believe it's adequately screened as it is. Uh, we have met with, uh, we had an onsite meeting last week. Uh, we were proposing some bamboo to be planted in here. We understand the concerns of the potential invasive species and the nature of that. Uh, although David's had success with it, we are willing to entertain, uh, some forsythia, uh, to be placed in this or another general type species, uh, in the rear.
No bamboo.
No bamboo. We, we got that. We also, uh, were given a handout by the CAC with regards to some recommendations for some aquatic plantings on the side slopes of the pond. Uh, and as we also stayed at the meeting, uh, we understand the importance of maintaining a, uh, a twenty-five foot buffer, uh, surrounding, uh, the pond. We would use a different species than our typical lawn, uh, surrounding the pond area. We would want to accompany this pond with a fountain, as we indicated at our meeting, we indicated last month. That is the extent of the changes. That's before, uh, that we're seeking, uh, approval for this evening.
Sharon and I did the site visit. Sharon, would you like to give a report?
Uh, no, we went out there last Tuesday.
Yes.
And we checked out the pond area, uh, refuge areas, um, the berm. We talked about the berm quite a bit. So, everything's really good. We don't have any great problems.
Yeah, we felt that taking, not installing the berm was a good idea. We could get all the trees and plantings that are already. It would do due to disruption towards all the other landscaping, landscape material. But we did discuss some additional materials such as forsythia, something along those lines to help me fill in some of the gaps, things of that sort. Um, but the berm really would, would not be of any great benefit there. It would probably do harm to what's already planted there and possibly retard some of the material. The planting plan, uh, for the, uh, around the pond, I know that, um, they'll be speaking, the applicants will be speaking with the CAB about appropriate plant materials, things like that. Um, when you look at what already is there and how this is developing, it's really off, it's awfully attractive. They're doing quite a nice job in there. The addition of the second story, um, potential little balcony things is not something that anyone's going to see. It's not something that's going to be of, in any way offensive to anyone. Removing the, uh, built, uh, refuse containers just cleans up the whole area in front rather than have these things sitting in front of, of, of these buildings at these different areas. You can have a much cleaner look along the drives at the front of the buildings and people can bring their garbage in and out from their garage the way they would, you know, ordinarily do. Um, I don't, and the pond idea, aeration, so it keeps the water clean, proper buffers so that, first of all, you keep geese away from it, so that you get some proper plantings around it. It's, it's gonna be, I think, a very, very attractive addition to, uh, Phase Two. Uh, I saw nothing there to, uh, be of any concern. Jeff, uh, Meg?
We, we went on another site visit. Meg and I did it on Sunday, and I'll leave those comments up to Meg. Look, we have no problem with the balconies and the course.
I'm sorry, I wasn't here for when you went, because it looked nice to be together. But, um, uh, I think the pond idea is great, and I want to compliment you on the specimen trees that you planted so far. They're quality, they're not unique, but they look like great specimens. So, thank you very much for that. Um, I was concerned, and I'm presuming you're talking now where the evergreens are shown there in the back.
Yes.
I didn't see fifteen here. I saw considerably less. Maybe the others haven't been planted yet. But my concern was that the ones that are planted are very close to the deciduous trees on the south side that were there before you didn't plant them. Uh, evergreens of this nature, except for how much they pull sun. And because those deciduous trees are on the south side of these trees, they're not gonna get sun. So, I, I'm worried about, um, their viability there. I think that they should be pulled closer to your units. There is space there. I, I wasn't sure, is the road is there now, the, the proposed, uh, walking path? There is a, there is a...
I'm sorry, this, this proposed walking path here?
Yeah.
Uh, is no longer this existing. This was the main, it's part of the final landscape buffer.
There is a road, I mean...
There, there was one that was, they had initiated it years ago, uh, as part of the overall landscaping buffer, uh, trail plan.
So, mine's gonna go there.
There is nothing going there.
So, there's considerable space then if you include that road before it goes down into the swale. And I think, you know, I think for the benefit of the tree's viability, it would be better pulling them towards the swale more than back toward those.
Yeah, the, the, the location of the trees that you've shown are, were in part because that was the fifty-foot, uh, buffer that was, uh, given to it. It had to be within fifty foot of the property line, uh, and the guidance given was to, instead of removing the existing trees, plant around the existing trees, and that's what we attempted to do in that area.
Yeah, I mean, I think also what's important to remember is that unfortunately, you know, we have to follow the plan. I agree with you a hundred percent. If I was out there, you know, and I could put the trees wherever I wanted, I agree with you, they should've been brought much closer to the building. But that's not what the plan said, so we just went ahead and we actually had all the trees surveyed and put exactly where they were on the plan. I don't have an issue planting more, you know, uh, trees.
I, I mean, I didn't see fifteen, so...
Right, it's very possible that maybe there's not...
The ones that haven't been planted yet should be, I would suggest that they be. And I'd be happy if I'm around to go out there and, you know, push them forward a bit.
Right, and I think now what I'd like to discuss is just the concept of getting, you know, a much more defined, definite buffer, not having to wait that long, separate of the trees. And we could plant some more trees. I don't really have an issue with that. But we don't want to go ahead and plant the bamboo. That's fine. Can I go ahead and, you know, not put on the berm and plant, you know, forsythia or anything else that you'd like to recommend that would give me?
Yeah.
Dense, solid growth cover. Um, because I would like something a little bit more instantaneous than the trees.
Yeah, there were a lot of issues there, and I think if you come to whatever our next meeting, we might be able to sit down and work on that.
I, I think at the end of the day, you know, one also has to consider the fact that there was never meant to be any additional landscaping here. It was a three-foot berm. Uh, that was the extent of it. And, and we're talking about an area that's considerably long, about, you know, three hundred and fifty feet, that's already stabilized. So, we're, we're, we're not, we're not looking to come in here with equipment that we're gonna be excavating large holes again, or any sort of holes. You know, our, our thought process was to do something that's gonna involve a shovel, uh, and some laborers as opposed to equipment that's going to disturb an area that we finally got stabilized. Uh, and that was all, one of our sole purposes of coming before the board. Uh, and, and, you know, we want to minimize that disturbance. We finally got something stabilized. Uh, and, you know, we haven't heard anything from the neighbors in that particular area, and, uh, so, I, I think, you know, uh, you know, in terms of minimizing the trees, I ha, I don't have an issue with the shrubs, but I personally, I'd rather not go back in there and, and disturb it with equipment.
Oh, yeah, it's fine. I have come to a meeting. We'll figure out, you know, what plan. And then that's, you know, we can go ahead and do that if I get, you know, the approval of the board to go ahead and make these changes.
Yeah, what, what we'd like to do is kinda render, uh, you know, we, we had your list that you gave us at the meeting and kinda come up with some ideas here to throw your way, so we have something to digest, uh, so it's, you know, a more of a beneficial session.
Um, trying to see if there's any other questions from members of the... I just wanted to ask any mention, any other questions from members of the board at the moment? Okay, is there any further report that the CAB would like to...
Uh, the only other thing that I noticed in this is, and it'd be great to see it when it's raining hard, but I know the area where you're constructing a pond is where that flows out and through the culvert and underneath the road and then goes into those what seem like, uh, holding ponds or something.
It's a really nice natural pathway here when down into here.
Well, it's actually going this way. It's actually going this way, staying in this direction.
Right, right, right.
Uh, flowing through a box culvert across the street.
Right.
And going into the other pond.
Right. I mean, I think it would be helpful, and I can talk to you about this, also plant around those holding ponds instead of having grass.
Absolutely. Right. I don't want to mow it. I, I don't, you know, so...
You're not gonna be able to mow it. Yeah, that's all.
Okay. From the public, yes?
Um, I first would say as well, we, these guys do a faithful, good faith job consistently. That's fine. But there are things in common, and they keep, they want, they want the best for themselves, what they take from us, and when they do that. So, I have a resistance on second floor balconies. You said no one will see them. We will see them. Not only see them, we will hear them. And that's, 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 and we, earlier, we, when, you know, they make their best faith, and they do, but deliberately something different. The white cedars we talked about, in front of our house, there's like, there's three white cedars, and then there's two other longleaf ponds. I don't know exactly where they are. But the white cedars, six feet up, they're this wide, you know, they're just eat back. Just to say, okay. But, um, we have a natural preserve there. We have, since September, we've seen a mountain lion, a bobcat, the last, the last year we saw a bear. We have our problems with inundation, as you know. But, and, but the question at that time was, this approval was given in nineteen eighty-five, and there's nothing you can do about it. Now, to make this an open air all for, all along the second floor balconies on the backside facing us is a very different animal, much better for them, but it's a very different animal than the approval that we were first faced with. And to have that addition of noise and activity is a diminution of what we hold, and we would oppose that.
Yeah, I, I think also it's important to remember, um, I, I certainly agree with you saying, um, I think it's important to remember that we were approved for a four-foot deck. So, all the B units in the original approval, in our approval, had a four-foot deck. No, that's okay. So, now what we're talking about is an additional six feet off of the four-foot deck to make a ten-foot deck. So, you know, understand that there still might be a deck there. It just might be a little smaller, but there was always a deck approved during the approval process.
That's the difference between a barbecue and a party and a, and a planter, and that's a big difference.
What, what's inside these, in this deck? Is it a living room or is it a bedroom?
It's just an out, like an outdoor deck.
No, but inside that?
Oh, inside, it's upstairs, so it's a bedroom.
So, this is a bedroom, Joey? I mean, I'm just saying, it sounds like a place that somebody would, most people don't use their second floor balconies anyway, off bedrooms, but it's not like you're gonna bring your friends over and you're gonna trumble through your bedroom.
Okay, then there's a second, then there's a second issue. Look, we can, I agree, that makes sense to me. I agree with you. Then there's a second issue, though, and that is, it's in directly opposite us. The, 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 the building directly opposite us is fifteen feet from the center, from the property line. We've mentioned that before, and I've got the zone, um, Joey was nice enough to give you, and I, and I can't determine what, exactly what this is zoned for and what the setback is, but isn't the setback supposed to be...
I, I, um, I think you're mistaken. I, I think what, what you're talking about, it's fifteen feet from a buffer, not from a property line. The property line is all the way back here, so it's impossible that it would be fifteen feet from there.
In phase three, though, I'm talking about phase three. We're facing, this, we're setting precedents, and every time we come here, we wanna, we wanna, you know, we wanna protect the flow as early as we can. In phase three, if you look at it, it's fifteen feet from the property line.
Right, that's possible, but...
The one thing I would have to say is that we're not dealing with phase three here. So, that, I understand, and that's...
But, no, and no, we are, because if second story balconies are granted for phase through, phase two, they will be grandfathered, you know, like, no, I'm not sure, but I would expect that they're grandfathered for phase three as well.
No, no, they're not.
No, they're not.
All, all that would be grandfathered, and it's not grandfathered, it was approved, is whatever was in the phase three approval that we did one year ago, or whatever that was, whenever that was. That's all that's approved for phase three. What we're doing today is strictly phase two and does not apply in any way, shape, or form to phase three. Yes?
I agree with my neighbor. I mean, you said no one sees the, the second floor. All of us have read the roads here. Yeah. It all faces us, it's two. So, don't say that no one sees, and I hundred percent agree with my neighbor.
And we, we're with you. We respect you guys.
And you did a great job.
But there's also a lot of things, you know, there's, this is, there's a balance here, so this is our pushback.
I, I, I think as it relates to the pushback, uh, you know...
How many feet are we talking about from, let's say, this gentleman's house?
You're, you're...
Well, what did, how would it...
From this, from, from your existing house, uh, you, you're talking from here to here, you're probably about four hundred feet?
Yeah, but we're talking about light and light and, and noise. Those are the things we're talking about. We're, first now...
The same thing could be experienced from your house, someone, your backlight on, as opposed to this individual's backlight. I mean, it's, you...
And I think also, it's not a matter of the deck, it's a matter of the backyard. I think that, I don't disagree with you. I hear what you're saying. But if they don't have the deck, they'll be out on the first floor patio, and they'll be making noise or whatever. Um, I, you know, I don't really think there's gonna be any more noise because the same people and the same activities are now happening on the second floor as opposed to the first floor. So, something you might want to think about.
May I ask a silly question? What was the compelling reason to go from a four-foot, which seems like a reasonable ornamental type, go out and sit in a chair on your second floor off your bed, to a ten-foot?
I think the, the reason has been the, uh, feedback from the potential buyers.
Okay.
As well as the phase one, people said like, it would be nice if the deck was a little bit bigger.
No, it's not an option. You would either do all of them or...
No, no, no. That was the other thing. It actually is an option.
It, it's an option.
Right, so it's possible.
And it's not for all of them.
But it's possible if nobody wanted to do the option, there would be no deck at all.
And it...
Because right now I've taken off all the decks.
And, and it's not for all the units. It's only for the B units within each building. So, for example, uh, Building Forty, only two of the condos could potentially have that option. Building Thirty-seven, which faces, uh, your house, Peter, only one of the condos could have that second floor option for the deck. It wouldn't be the entire, uh, building having the deck.
So, this is an option that's available to a buyer who could choose to do it or choose not to do it.
For only the B unit.
And how many other guys?
Eight unit.
I'm sorry, there, how many are there?
So, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Out of how many?
Twelve out of a potential one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Twelve out of a potential thirty-two units. The one on the western portion of the, uh, site.
Right, I, I took out all of these.
Nothing on the interior that's facing the roadway.
Right, uh, some buildings don't have a B unit in there, so obviously there's no deck option.
Further comments?
Can you, when you come, can you show us what the landscaping is on the backside? Again, I mean, I know we talked about...
I would have to bring the plans. It doesn't change anything, which is the landscaping.
So, are there things like willows and stuff?
Oh, yeah. I mean, is all the stuff you picked out?
Uh, to them, it gets quite big.
Well, yeah, well, you can see all these trees. I mean, all of these trees are getting planted, and I think a majority of them are willow trees.
And they're gonna get big and...
Right, I mean, again, you know, not immediately. You know, it's not gonna happen overnight.
Well, with, with the exception of, we have done the buffer.
Yes.
We have done the buffer, but we haven't done the plantings internal to the site in this particular area because the grading hasn't been finalized around these units.
Right, but I mean, there is a complete, you know, planting plan, and I believe a majority of these are willows.
Well, a, a, a good idea would be to take a look at, uh, Unit Twenty-eight or Unit Twenty-nine, uh, which has been fully planted, uh, to get a feel for what the overall planting's gonna be for each unit. I mean, we have the plans as well. But actually seeing it compared to looking at the picture on a plan sheet says, you know...
I think what might be better is if we come to you, because it's very specific now, it's the site lines, properties, be better if you did this, uh, plan.
Onsite?
Onsite.
The thing that I, what I think I hear happening, if you guys are looking for approval, rather than come back next month with, because you put a tree from here to there, and you said, if it's the planning board's approval is we give them approval to work with the CAC and walk away from it as far as the planning board's concerned. Because otherwise, we'd be going back and forth and back and forth. Uh, that's what I'd like to see.
Yeah, I mean, I...
No attempt to...
We've had no issue, I think you both would agree, we've had no issue working together, and that would certainly be fine with me because then I could get started actually improving the project.
But the CAB working with you and the homeowners?
Well, again, I think, you know, I think what you have to decide is either the decks are a go or an no.
Yeah, I think we can make that decision. I think it's the plantings that I would...
Yeah, the plantings.
That, that's belly button point in the grand scheme of it.
And, and the one thing I do want to add with regards to the plantings, and, and I think you can all attest to this, is we, we spent a significant amount of time in the field here, and, and it was pouring that day, uh, last year.
Two years ago, you can't tell them.
Yeah, and, uh, and we strategically placed these trees so that they would obscure the view of your property. Granted, I mean, they're still, these aren't fully mature trees. There's a considerable amount of growing that needs to take place. They were, you know...
Fortunately.
Yeah, any, any of them were eight to twelve foot that were planted. Uh...
Didn't, excuse me, but, uh, didn't they have to come and replant some of those?
Yeah.
Yeah, some...
Because the deer had eaten them or what happened?
In that particular case, that was the reason why we planted in the cypress, I think it was, or the cedar trees. You know, like, like we planted, uh, like we planted a bigger tree, knowing that they were gonna eat as high as they could reach.
Correct.
There was just absolutely nothing I can do about that. So, as soon as they grow another eight feet, you're still gonna have that brown spot as high as they can eat. That's always gonna be there.
Yeah, we put in seventeen of our own, and there was only one alive.
Right, but again, they do have a top to them.
Right.
If I put in four-foot trees, they'd be, you know, golden.
Have, have you guys had a chance to look at the landscape planning for around the buildings, which as they say, have not gone in yet? The plan was approved, but have you had a chance to take a look at those, the willows and things?
They sent us copies of them.
I'm sorry?
They sent us copies of the plan.
Okay, so you do have that. I realize, I mean, they're not in now, so you see in the back of the buildings. But my understanding is when we did go through that plan for the actual landscaping around the buildings themselves, it would, nothing's gonna completely eliminate, you know, from sight, but it would significantly obscure any view in towards the back of those buildings from...
A lot of it is like, what you did with the woods. The woods are just successful with the green, the green screen that went down, because of the evergreens.
Right.
And that's what we would go for, I think. I, that's the ideal.
That's part of what the buffer is, and then, of course, I think the willows are being used because they do grow quickly. They tend to get broad, and they're gonna give you much quicker, a quicker cover than evergreens are going to do.
I, 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 I think at the end of the day, Peter, y- your property is much higher. We've had this discussion before. Uh, we've come onto your property, we've planted additional trees. Because of the elevation difference, it's difficult to do anything else.
Yeah, I think also, you know, like the key to the whole tree siding scenario, it's not going away. All we can do is make it nicer to look at. That's it. Okay? Um, you'd have to bring in trees. It, it's really almost impossible. So, all we're really trying to do is make it so that it looks like it's finished, it's completed, it's nice, all the trees are in. And in twenty years, maybe you won't see it. I hope so.
Think of me around in twenty years.
I hope so.
That's your challenge. Be there.
I think as you said, the gardens look...
If you are, you probably won't be able to see anything anyway, right?
I think it's a good point that the woods, you know, that was done twenty, twenty-five years ago, and it really has, I mean, when it was originally went in, it looked pretty naked. It was not all that attractive. And it, granted, it does take time. I mean, there's no, and the deer do not help the situation.
Yeah, much to, you know, I don't want to give David any more accolades than what he already deserves, but he, the, the first step he did on this project was go in and put in the landscape buffer instead of waiting till the end of phase three.
Right.
He went ahead and installed it in phase two. Everybody wanted the opportunity to see the trees once they're installed so that we can add more. Uh, more was requested, more was installed. More was installed, some even on your property, Peter. Some, uh, that didn't make it, David went out and replaced. We've got, we got letters from a neighbor. David went out there and replaced it. So, we've made every effort and, you know, it's, it's, we're, we haven't been trying to take, 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 take. We've, we've been doing a lot of, uh, negoti, not negotiating, but we've been communicating every intention here. There's been nothing that's been kind of sidestepped here. We've worked with everybody patiently. Uh, and, you know, the screening here, uh, I, I, I think once mature will be adequate. Uh, and, and once again, as David answered, this is an option. If somebody decides not to take it, they don't take it. We're talking twelve out of thirty-two units, one-third of the units in the western portion of the site.
Right, I mean, I can only tell you, I can't count on it. I can only tell you what's happening with sales right now. We're still in an economy where people are just not spending on extras. You know, they want to get the unit, they like what's in it, that's all fine. We've been very fortunate. We've taken a decent amount of deposits already, signed two contracts already. But, you know, again, though I like to offer things that people say they want, most of the time, they want it, they just don't want to pay for it. So, once it comes to the point of where they have to pay, we just really haven't seen people going ahead and diving into these units and spending tons of money on options.
From our aspect, um, a, a, a party deck on the second floor reflecting is a nightmare. That's, that's, that's why, that's why we're here. It's diff, sound reflects from a flat residence space differently than it does off the, off the ground floor. And tho, those are, we, we...
I completely, I completely agree, but also the reality is, the people that are coming to look at these units, there's no parties going.
Okay, that's great.
And, and a party deck's bigger than ten by ten.
The person that's coming to look at these units is sixty, sixty-five years old. This is not a family, young crowd type of environment.
Although for anyone interested, there is no age restriction.
And then, yeah, still, I want, we agree, I miss we agree, and still, in phase three, I'm looking at, I think it's fifteen feet from the property. And that's, that's...
That may be something that we can...
So, i- if I'm hearing light as a concern, if we were to provide a fixture with a shield on it?
Well, that's it. I think all lighting should be cut off, so there is no...
Yeah, I mean, if we provided that fixture?
It's down and that's it. I mean, that's what, that's what we require in our code anyway. There should be no light trespass. I don't want to suggest to you that you're not gonna see, I mean, you do have a small little town growing next to you where there was a farmer's field for a long time, and it is different, and there is no way you're not gonna be aware of it being there. I don't mean to suggest that you won't be.
Well, I'd like them to finish because for five years, whatever, I'm, I'm seeing constroses. I'd like them to be doing great jobs. By the way, I was gonna finish with the question. I didn't get any notice about the requests or about the meeting. I just happened to see the sign. Are you supposed to get...
We do have the...
It was in the paper.
It was in the paper, but we did all the... It was in the paper, but we did all, so we have the... We have all the cards here, that you'll return to us.
One five nine, is that okay?
Okay, that might be the end of the meeting for me.
Some towers that look like trees.
Now that you mention it.
Like that one down, uh, somewhere, somewhere, just near the end of six eighty-four, that's where you asked, I'll pick up anything, oh, God. Bunch of short ones.
Here, what's your exact address?
Uh, forty-eight through the road, before P.O. Box twenty-eight nine. I get a little magnet for the P.O. Box.
It's possible, I have a P.O. Box too, and if for some reason by mistake it was sent to your street address, sometimes the post office doesn't, to me, if they send to my street address, they don't put it in my post office box and I don't get it sometime, usually they're really good about it, and they do put it in the post office box.
What's your last name, too?
Yeah. Couple.
Yeah. So you're gonna go talk to John?
No.
All right, can we move on here? Mr. Chairman, can we move on?
Yeah. If it was a list supplied by the town, then I think then you've fulfilled your requirement, we just need to relook at our list and make sure it's complete.
Beans.
The what?
Beans.
What, the beans?
Of course they are.
Well, our plan is impossible to close the public hearing.
One of my most popular residents. When maple...
Maple beans, no.
How do you do that?
No, I mean, not the, not the dish, the bean itself.
The beans, you buy, you buy different kinds of beans, you buy butter beans, whatever.
I think that, I think what we're gonna need to do is we need to go back and look at our list again, because your names were not on the list, and they obviously should have been, you were, you were notified before, so clearly there was some, some little glitch somewhere, and your name should have been, you should have been received those notifications also, um, so that's a... Yeah, no, that's our fault, because we gave, they, they come to us for the list, we gave them the list, and they did exactly what they were supposed to do, we just need to tone up our list a little bit. I'm glad you saw the sign, that's the reason we put the sign, we put it in the paper too, to try to catch everybody, but you should have both received the notification, and that was just a mistake on our part, for which I do apologize. Do I have any other comments?
No, we don't have a decent amount.
Uh, th- this is? Oh, okay, cool. Oh, okay, great, this is strictly, uh, for phase two, uh, if there are other issues, you know, about phase three or something like that, that may be something to take up, they've been, as you say, they've been very amenable to meeting, to discussing problems, and when phase three, you know, starts coming up, to be, that's a good time to say, by the way, could we just sit down and have a little talk about whatever? But right now, we can't take that into effect, 'cause it's not part of this site plan, so it doesn't, doesn't apply to this. But it doesn't mean your comments aren't important, and at the right time, they would certainly be applicable to phase three. Any other comments or questions from the public, from the board, from the CAB? Okay, am I in a position to close the public hearing?
You can close the public hearing, there are a couple of things you're gonna have to talk about before you take action, but you can close the public hearing.
Okay.
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, public hearing is closed.
There are probably, uh, three points that I think the board needs to consider before, before it takes action. One is, one's simply a, a procedural item, uh, the resolution that was adopted, the procedural resolution that was adopted on this project called for a review by the town engineer. Uh, frankly, I don't think, you know, I'll give you my opinion, that there's nothing in this proposal that really requires review by the town engineer, but, um, I think the board needs to waive that particular, particular clause, uh, if it's going to move forward on the project.
By resolution this evening.
Or just by, by motion, by consensus of the board, that res- that, uh, review by the town engineer is not required, despite the fact that, uh, somebody included that in the draft resolution, uh, that was acted on at the last meeting.
But why don't we...
Uh, that's, 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 that's item number one, item number two, uh, then would deal with the, uh, the, uh, the matter of the, uh, of the actions before the board, and there appear to be two potential issue areas involved, uh, that is, uh, the question of, uh, whether or not the optional, uh, decks are going to be authorized is really a matter that needs to be decided by this board, I think, directly. I think it's a question, uh, whether there's consensus on that particular point before moving on a resolution, and then, uh, the third matter is the matter of the landscaping, uh, whether the board feels comfortable, uh, with, uh, deferring, uh, to, um, the applicant having a continuing dialogue with the CAB, uh, as, uh, in furtherance of the, the kind of the general recommendations that the CAB made this evening, uh, and, uh, having those simply, that, 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 those modifications reflected on the site plan, uh, and really reviewed by Michael as chair before he would sign off on the site plan anyway. So those are three, you know, three separate items, uh, the, the alternative would be to simply say, well, the site plan needs to be buttoned up precisely as it's going to be following that discussion, and then an action taken by the board.
How do you all feel about the, uh, engineering review? Does it seem that we're comfortable waiving that?
I'm not so sure.
In terms of the second floor, uh, balconies as an option?
I'll go with it.
Seems that, um...
I have no problem.
This, there should be sufficient screening once the plantings are done around the actual buildings, um...
And they're off the bedroom.
Yeah, and they're off the bedroom, rather than off of, say, a living area or, you know, ground floor, which, and of course, the lighting requirement, if there's a light out there, is of course, cutoff lighting, so it merely lights that area and doesn't trespass beyond there.
Downlit cutoff.
Downlit only, okay, and last but not least, we have been working with, with the, with this applicant, with the CAB, working with them, um, to do the plantings, uh, doing onsite, uh, consultations and seeing, and, on an ongoing basis, I think that, from what I've seen, that's worked very well, um...
I absolutely concur with that.
Does anyone feel uncomfortable with that?
Not at all.
I think the CAB has taken this very seriously.
They should encourage it, I mean, they are...
Yep, I agree with you there.
Advising us, they're advising the people they, they, we want them to advise.
And in this instance, the people they're advising actually listen, I mean, it doesn't always happen.
That's true.
So...
We step out of it.
Yeah.
And they're the experts.
Yeah.
There you go.
So I think we're comfortable on those three points?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
My trees are all dead at my house.
It wasn't my fault.
The deer.
Did deer eat all of mine?
I...
On that, on that basis, then, there are, there are, the draft resolution that you have on pages five and six, uh, there are a couple of modifications, the first is a, um, a ra- a matter of greater specificity as well as correction, uh, where the, the application is described, uh, there's the matter of replacement of the optional decks, uh, I just wanna change that, uh, for placement of optional ten-by-ten second-story decks on a total of twelve units, being the B units within buildings thirty-three to forty. So that will be, uh, Joan will be picking up that language.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, did you say you could have an option of a four-by-four also with a ten-by-ten, or is the four-by-four gone?
No, the four-by-four's gone.
Okay, that's gone, okay, I'm sorry.
Four-by-ten.
Four-by-ten, I'm sorry, four-by-ten. Pushing that out six foot.
Right, okay.
And...
We gotta lose this too.
I, um, no, that stays, that's, that was the application itself.
Okay, okay.
Then on numbered paragraph two, uh, modifications becomes modification, we're going to strike the second modification, which is the one that deals with any comments that may have been forthcoming from the planning board engineer, and modify the first modi- the modification statement to read, modification of the proposed planting plan to eliminate the use of yellow grove bamboo, and to reflect the overall recommendations for additional plantings set forth by the town conservation board in its remarks at the public hearing, comma, as will be further detailed in a work session between the applicant and the CAB.
I'm just gonna put C-A-R-T-S notes on this.
Well, yeah, that's, Joan's gonna...
Should we...
That reflects these.
With the CAB, should we say, and will be finalized between the two, as opposed to just...
No, no, it's, it really won't be finalized until those modifications are shown on the site plan and Michael signs the site plan, that's the finalization. So you've got, you've got a kind of a check and balance, you've got that, you've got that last say.
Okay.
You get, Michael gets the last word.
He's got the papal blessing.
Cool, okey-dokey, well, let's start in on this guy, okay. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows, on the November fifth, two thousand twelve, application by Rhinebeck Gardens Group LLC under Town Code Chapter one-two-five, for amendment of the approved site plan for gardens at Rhinebeck Phase Two, as granted by the planning board on December twentieth, two thousand ten, to effect the following proposed modifications, in the ongoing multifamily development, all as depicted on an engineer's drawing entitled amended site plan, prepared for gardens at Rhinebeck Phase Two, prepared by Chaysen Companies and dated November fifth, two thousand twelve. Incorporation of a pond for aesthetic purposes on an eastern portion of the site within a landscaped area, adjustment of the landscape schedule to accommodate the proposed pond, elimination of common refuse areas, and incorporation instead of individual refuse pickup at residence, placement of optional ten-by-ten second-story decks...
On a total of twelve units, being the B units within buildings thirty-three to forty.
Uh, lowering of berm to south of buildings thirty to thirty-two by three feet, and incorporation of a row of yellow bam- yellow growth bamboo. One, determines upon review of the EAF Part One certified by the applicant, and its own completion of EAF Part Two, in consideration of the criteria for determining significance set forth...
No bamboo.
No, 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 wait, that's, that's what they applied for.
That's the application.
Okay.
Of course, I just said the same thing to Art, and he said, wait a minute, that's what they applied for. As set forth in Title Six, Part six-one-seven-point-seven-C-N-Y-C-R-R, that proposed action, as described in the application, of being an unlisted action, will cause no potential significant adverse impact on the environment, and thus, issues a...
In the application and as modified below.
And as modified below, and thus, issues a negative declaration, giving an environmental impact statement to be not required, and stating such will not be prepared. Two, grants the requested amendment for approved site plan, subject to the following modification, modification of the proposed planting, overall planting plan, to eliminate the...
Use of yellow bamboo, and to, uh, reflect direct, the overall recommendations for additional planting set forth by the town conservation advisory board in its remarks at the public hearing, as will be fur- as will be further detailed in a work session between the applicant and the CAB.
Three, contingent upon the completion of the above required modifications to the satisfaction of the chairman, approves the amended site plan and authorizes the chairman to stamp and sign the amended site plan upon the applicant's satisfaction of each of the below conditions and/or requirements within six calendar months of the adoption of this resolution, submission of amended site plan drawings in the number and form specified within Town Code Chapter one-two-five, including thereon all required stamp seals and certifications, payment of any outstanding fees or reimbursable amounts due to the Town of Rhinebeck with respect to the submission, review, and processing of this application under the Town Code Chapter one-two-five, and seeker. Could I hear a...
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I will poll the board, Bob?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Melody?
Aye.
Aye.
Jesse? Woody?
Aye.
Sharon?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So you're good to go.
Thank you. Enjoy your holidays.
Thank you.
And happy new year. Okay, the, the next item of business... Our next item of business is, uh, Damian Patrick, Urban Builders, he has requested an extension of his approvals, he still does not have his site plan stamped and signed, we're still working out an easement with him in terms of drainage and whatnot along Ackertook Road. So, let me just read this little thingy. In consideration of the special circumstances cited in the timely and next October two thousand twelve, we'll get the date, letter requested by Ms. Victoria Palladaro, attorney on behalf of Damian Patrick Urban Builders, Inc., the Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts, it here extends from December one, two thousand twelve, to May thirty-first, two thousand thirteen, the time period for satisfaction of conditions set forth within planning board's conditional approved resolution of June fourth, two thousand twelve, pertaining to special use permits, site plan approval, and wetlands permit in the manner of the proposed construction of a single-family dwelling and related site improvements at one-twenty-one Ackertook Road in the rural countryside R.C. five district. Uh, and we have this Palladaro's letter annexed. Could I hear a motion to approve?
Did, uh...
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Did he have, is he still looking for approval for his easements?
Uh, yes.
Do we know what's going on there, 'cause there's, uh...
He started, or, he started, he started...
He has no building permits, he should not, I may have to go...
There's something going on, there's a...
He started back in the summer.
Yeah, he has...
And he's...
I drove by the other day, there, there's like a backhoe or something. He's got equipment there again, I drive, I drive by every, twice a day.
Yeah, I may need to have the building inspector go out there and take a look, 'cause he has no permits, either stamped and signed, site plan or building permits.
Yeah, he definitely did some clearing, so...
Oh, well, he's...
He did site work probably in July.
He's not supposed to be... Anyway, uh, just one more little enforcement issue we'll have to address. Oh, yeah, I know it is, it's, anyway.
Do we have a code enforcement officer that is functioning right now?
Yeah, I believe we do, yes.
Okay.
I have not, I have not been informed otherwise, okay.
Have you heard something?
The next, yeah, the next item on the agenda, Emery and Webb LLC, glow neon signs, um, as stated in the agenda, this item involves the initial presentation of an application for site plan approval in the matter of amendment of approved site plan to authorize installation of a replacement freestanding pylon sign in the crossroads business district, uh, the square footage of the sign authorized per relief granted by the ZBIA on August fifteenth, two thousand twelve. The reason this is coming before us is because the way our zoning law is written, it, we require site plan for sign permits unless the sign being applied for exactly meets the design standards for signs in our, our zoning law. Since an amendment was required, since I, I'm sorry, since a variance was required for this, and which was granted, it doesn't meet that, and therefore, we have this application for site plan, yes.
I'm Nancy Forrest, I'm with Glow New Signs, I'm the one that brought this, uh, through the zoning process and received the variances, um, one for, uh, being five-point-two square feet over the size, it's now in the ordinance, but that is still less square footage than what currently exists. Um, we have, uh, altered the sign to their new branding for their five offices, and we've incorporated it into a traditional kind of look with, uh, poles and pineal tops and a stone base. It is in the exact so, exact location where the sign currently exists, we haven't moved anything.
How is it lit?
It is, um, backlit, I believe you have a medical facility that was recently done with halo letters.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, that part, um, is considered external, so that did not require a variance.
Yeah.
Um, actually, I think we are actually better than, uh, what your ordinance calls for. As far as, uh...
Oh, brother.
Yeah, that was, uh, three-twelve, two thousand twelve, section one-twenty-five dash three-seven, L-two-F, states that the background surface of a backlit sign that the light shines on shall have a light reflective value of no more than sixty percent, this proposed is thirty.
Any questions from members of the board?
Yeah, how long does it stay lit, all night?
Um, that was the second variance, no, it will be shut at ten, the, they take clients up until nine o'clock appointments.
Okay.
So it will be closed down at ten at night.
What is the, what is the medical procedure now, any idea?
Oh, I beg your pardon?
Do they turn theirs off next to the grand unit?
I don't, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't been by to see.
I, I don't know, I just, I thought it, I'm just looking at it, I'm just...
I'd have to look at, we'd have to look at the approval we gave and see if there was indeed a, a time on and off, I, I do not remember.
I don't think so.
Your new ordinance calls that, uh, whenever the business is not, um, open, that it be off, so...
And they, then they would have to be off whenever they're, I don't know what their hours are.
They may have an emergency.
They're open?
Regulate the lights at the back of the building?
Mm-hmm, oh, yeah, yeah, we did, so...
They're open, uh, they're open seven days, I thought they were open twenty-four, I pulled them up.
I don't think...
I think they're open eight and nine, I don't think they're, they're not twenty-four-seven.
Oh, okay, um, what I have here is I have a draft resolution, and basically, we have to go through the site plan review process, set a public hearing, and have people go out and take a look at this. This may be the last one for this sign, okay. The Town of Rhinebeck Planning Board hereby acts as follows, on the July twenty-fourth, two thousand twelve, application by Glow Neon Signs on behalf of Emery and Webb LLC, for site plan approval to authorize a replacement freestanding pylon sign at the present insurance office at three-four-four-three-four-six Old Post Road in the crossroads business district, all as governed by the application for sign permit filed with the town zoning enforcement officer in an area variance with respect to maximum sign area granted by the ZBIA on August fifteenth, two thousand twelve. Accepts the application as adequate for planning board consultant and public review, classifies the proposed action as described in the application as a type-two action under seeker, for which further environmental quality review is, is precluded, delegates planning board members who wants to go see where the sign's gonna go. Okay, I'll go, who else wants to go, okay, Mel- Melody and I'll go. Okay, Mel- Melody and I'll go.
Going in the same spot, is it?
You know, if we go at dinnertime, we'll go to CJ's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, you didn't, you didn't throw that one in there.
Yeah, well, you know, that's, I just, you know. To conduct a field visit to the project site and report their observations at the time of public hearing, refers the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development for review and advisory opinion pursuant to Section 239 of the General Municipal Law, refers the applications to the Town Conserva- Conservation Advisory Board for review and comment, schedules a public hearing on the application for Monday, January 7th, 2003, at.
That's correct.
At 7:00 PM, and directs a clerk to provide or otherwise cause notice and posting thereof pursuant to requirements set forth within Town Code, Chapter 125, zoning. Could I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, okay.